Hereby called to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, February 25th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. So tonight, we have Principal Becky Littman, and she will introduce fourth grade's central, fourth, excuse me, Central's fourth grade Green Team students, and they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here, Green Team.
Thank you. We're honored to be standing in front of you. Green Team, come stand up here in a line, let me practice. This is our fourth grade Green Team with Teacher Advisor Ms. Joanna Potakis, and they are honored to be standing here before you. They're going to introduce to you themselves, and they're also going to share some initiatives that they have going on at Central School.
Good evening, District 39 Board members and members of the Willmet community. We are Central School Green Team and very pleased to be here. You might be asking yourself, what's Green Team? Our Green Team is a group of fourth graders who are excited to learn about and help our environment. Every year, interested fourth graders can apply to be on Green Team. This year, we have 38 members.
In our app.
And my name is.
Kit.
My name is.
My name is Kit.
My name is Trent. In our application to be on Green Team, we come up with ideas of how we want to help our environments and our school. These become our goals for the year. Some of our goals this year are to help out in our school garden, find ways to reuse school supplies, help endangered animals, and encourage Central School students and teachers to recycle properly, just to name a few. We meet at least once during our lunch and recess, time to work on these goals and plan upcoming events.
Hi, my name is Charlotte. Our Green Team this year has so many members in it that we had to create smaller groups. Our small groups are called the Green Eggs and Ham Group and the Master Recyclers. These groups rotate attending our monthly meetings and doing Friday morning announcements with Ms. Littman.
Hi, my name is Ally, and one of our goals this year was to make a fun, was to make fun goals for our school's pop tab collection program. As a school, we collect pop tabs to help the Ronald McDonald House charity. Pop tabs are easy to collect and recycle. The Green Team members collect them from every classroom once a month, weigh them, and pack them up. The pop tabs are sent to a recycling plant who pays for the metal. The money that goes, then goes directly to help the charity.
Hi, my name is Sam. Each month, the class that collects the most pop tabs wins our Golden Pop Tab Award. So far this year, Central School students have reached one of our goals. We've recycled enough pop tabs to donate to United Stay for Family at any Ronald McDonald House in the Chicago area.
Hi, my name is Colin, and in a few weeks, our Green Team will be participating in a Going Green Fair on March 10th. The fair is sponsored by Go Green Willmet, and its theme this year is Waste Not Want Not. This will be the eighth year our Green Team will be part of the fair. Our members will talk to the public about what our school does to be green. We'll also be showing anyone who steps, stops at our booth how to wa-waste not by taking an old T-shirt and making it into a bag like this one. We're really excited about the fair and hope to see you there.
Hi, my name is Libby. You can find out more about the Green Team by visiting our website, which can be found at the Central School homepage. We'd like to thank you very much for inviting us here tonight and allowing us time to share our group with you. Now, if you all would please rise, we'd like to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few students without speaking parts I know would love to say their names for you.
Please.
Hi, my name is Dylan.
Hi, my name is Colin.
Hi, my name is Sophie.
Hi, my name is Henry.
Oh, and I'm Joanna Potakis.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you very much for the work you're doing. I think many of us would agree that thinking about our national resources and our environment is a very patriotic thing to do, so thanks for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Take care. The artwork tonight. Jamie Berngard displayed Central students' artwork. First graders contributed their colorful community collages. Second graders shared community-themed artwork focused on artistic details. Third graders created self-portrait drawings inspired by contemporary artist Romero Brito. Fourth graders contributed their awesome self-portrait collages inspired by Rory Lichtenstein, using enlarged dots painted with bold black outlines and flat primary colors, and I invite anybody who happens to be in the MEC to come by and see these beautiful works of art. I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and all are among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. Thank you. So with that, let's move to approving the minutes. I seek a motion to approve the January 28th, 2019 Board of Education and Executive Session Minutes.
I move to approve the January 28th, 2019 Board of Education and Executive Session Minutes.
Thank you. The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any errors, omissions, comments, thoughts, et cetera? Great. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Motion carries by general consent. That brings us to our public comment section. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move along. And that brings us to Board Reports, and first, our community report, excuse me, our committee reports. And the first is Mr. Panzika with School Finance.
The School Finance Committee did not meet this month. Will meet again with the next committee of the whole in March.
Terrific. And Facility Development with Mrs. Schaff.
Yes, the Facilities Development Committee met as a part of the Committee of the Whole on February 11th, 2019. Here at the MEC, we discussed several topics. First, Todd Main from Future Green presented a proposal to the committee about several different ways that the district can add solar power to reduce both energy expenses and emissions. Future Green is a nonprofit initiative of the Illinois Association of School Boards and the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, and was formed to provide school districts with renewable electric power solutions. District 39 plans to review the proposals, and we will have more information next month on how we would suggest moving forward. A second conversation topic was the Harper Construction for Kindergarten Enrichment. Our construction manager presented more refined budget estimates for the proposed kindergarten enrichment construction at Harper. We'll go out to bid on March 11th and review the bids and final recommendations at our April Board Meeting with a vote at that same meeting. Third topic was High Crest Phase II Construction. We went out to bid for the project on January 21st, and the bids are back later tonight. We will review these bids and the final recommendations, and then the Board will vote on moving forward with construction in June when school dismisses for the summer. Fourthly, we discussed a contract between Regina and District 39. The two districts are entering into an agreement to share facilities. We will discuss in more detail later in tonight's meeting. And finally, the committee reviewed briefly the Village Storm Water Construction Project that is planned for the field between High Crest and the junior high. The next Facilities Committee meeting will take place on Monday, March 11th, at 8:00 a.m. here at the MEC.
Sounds good. Do you want to keep rolling with strategy?
Let me go with strategy. We also held a strategy meeting Monday, February 11th, as part of the Committee of the Whole. At that meeting, Board members held a short brainstorming session as a first step to help think through and discuss strategic priorities in preparation for the development of a strategic plan with the new superintendent. We will meet again on March 11th to continue the conversation. And I have one more update about the High Crest Outdoor Classroom Committee. In January, we learned that the current priority in the redevelopment of the outdoor classroom was to design the basic hardscape and drainage. Kelly Jackson and Ellen Crispino worked with our architectural firm, STR, to make these decisions. The garden itself will not be finished until spring 2020 after the Learning Commons construction is complete. So we are now discussing a two-tiered phased-in plan for the outdoor classroom work. The next and second phase will focus on planting design of the existing outdoor classroom coupled with a plan for excavation and salvaging current plants, and Phase Three will look at extending the garden to other spaces at High Crest, such as a garden between the gym and classrooms and a potential mini farm redo, among other ideas the committee has. The committee will meet again in early March to begin Phase Two work.
Thank you very much. That completes our committee reports and takes us to our liaison reports. And Mr. Panzika, I believe you have the first two of these.
The CRC, the committee, the Community Review Committee, met on February 4th. They've completed their basic research, which included an extensive survey and review of national articles and other items. They're now actively working on putting together their report, and they'll meet again on Monday, March 4th. The District 39 Educational Foundation met on February, met in February also. They had a very busy month. They completed their trivia night, and it was very successful in their new venue, St. Joseph's School. They also hosted a Science Olympiad Open House this previous Saturday where they demonstrated, where the children demonstrated some of the projects that they did, including some gliders and roller coaster presentations. There's a, their next event is a Family Bingo Night, which is this week, March 1st. Unfortunately, it's already been sold out. And their next meeting will be March 20th.
Thank you very much, and I think we have IASB for Ms. Sternwiler.
This week in Springfield, IASB is joining three other organizations, ISA, ISBO, and IPA, at the Alliance Legislative Summit for a two-day event to discuss and advocate for, she's facing Illinois Public Education. And then, there's an event that, of interest to us, actually, maybe of interest to some of you. The North Cook Division Dinner Meeting is on the 20th of March. Registration's open for Building Resilience in Students Through Trauma-Informed Practices. It's going to be held at Niles West High School on March 20th, and the Principal of North Shore Academy is going to share current research on the prevalence and impact of trauma on children and describe how to create school communities that promote resilience in students and enhance their engagement and achievement in school. So I thought that might be of interest to some of you, and that is all for now.
Great. Thank you very much. And finally, the IAC with Ms. Schneider Fabs. Your mic's not on there.
There we go.
Better. We like to hear you.
I'm usually so quiet. The Insurance Advisory Committee met on February 4th. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss preliminary changes to premiums and benefits for the upcoming insurance plan year beginning June 1st, 2019. District 39, as of last year, belongs to Cooperative 90's Health Insurance Group. At the time of the meeting on February 4th, decisions regarding premium cost had not been determined. However, it's expected that HMO premiums will decrease, and the PPO rates will increase in the new plan year. The committee also discussed the possibility of moving to Cooperative 90's Dental Insurance Group. Unlike health insurance, employees pay the full premium for dental insurance. Therefore, the committee discussed the need to get input from employees regarding this potential change. Currently, Guardian and First Commonwealth is the district's insurance company. Cooperative 90's uses the Delta Dental Insurance Company. The committee agreed that a brief survey to staff regarding the move to Cooperative 90's Dental was a necessary component to make the decision. Later in the meeting, you'll hear more about this potential change and recommendations to move to the Cooperative 90's Dental Plan. Finally, open enrollment will begin in April with the new plan year beginning June 1st.
Thank you very much. And finally, under Board Reports, our Legislative Update with Ms. Kenny.
Thank you, Mark. There have been a myriad of bills introduced in Springfield that are moving their way through both the Senate and House side committees. One of particular significance that passed, passed Friday, two Fridays ago, February 15th, was the minimum wage bill that made it through both sides of the House and under the Governor's desk for signing, which will put the minimum wage across Illinois at $25 an hour, I'm sorry, $15 an hour in year 2025. Yes, year 2025. The other hot, and stay with me on this, was the Governor, Governor gave his first State of the Union address. The main focus of this address was the, he laid out his budget priorities. I'll highlight here, the Governor's, excuse me, he went into, he cited, in laying out his budget priorities, he first cited the state's $3.2 billion budget deficit and the $15 billion backlog of unpaid bills, also coupled, along with further claiming that he will hold the line on spending. He added that it will take several years to get out of this mess. However, within the parameter of his revenue and the budget plan, several areas of the state budget are recommended to be increased. The government recommends, the Governor recommends that state resources be concentrated into three main areas. One of particular interest to us would, of course, be education, health and human services, and public safety. He plans on increasing revenues. He hopes, he's proposing to raise $1.1 billion in new revenues for the fiscal year 2020 budget through the following. $170 million from the legalization of recreational use of marijuana, $200 million from the legalization of sports betting, $390 million from opposing additional taxes on insurance companies, $175 million from a new delinquent tax payment incentive program, $94 million from closing income tax corporate loopholes, $65 million from increasing taxes on cigarettes and e-cigarettes, and $20 million from a new tax on plastic bags. Specific to education spending increases, he's proposing to increase funding for both K-12 education and higher education, including $375 million increase for evidence-based funding formula, $100 million increase for the Early Childhood Block Grant, $3.5 million for a match for the new federal birth-to-five program, $5 million increase for career and technical education, $250,000 increase for educator misconduct investigations, 5% increase for universities and community colleges, and 12.5% increase for monetary assistance programs, MAP grants. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to information items. Dr. Lechner.
Yes, and the Board did not receive any written communications this month, so our first announcement is going to be about the new principal at Harper Elementary School with Dr. Sue Kick retiring on June 30th. The last three months, we've been doing an extensive interview process, and we are now proud to announce that Erin Dubnow is the new principal of Harper Elementary School. Mr. Dubnow completed his bachelor's degree at the University of Illinois, followed by a master's in school administration from National Lewis University, and he began his career in District 39. For seven years, Erin served as an eighth-grade math, science, and social studies teacher at the junior high. In 2015, he was promoted to the fifth-grade assistant principal at High Crest. In the High Crest, he's had numerous accomplishments, including significant improvements to the fourth, the fifth-grade transition process. He's made positive connections with students, parents, and staff, and we welcome Erin to the podium.
Hello? Thank you. First, let me congratulate Dr. Sue Kick on her upcoming requirement. Second, I'm humbled, I'm humbled by this opportunity. Harper's had such strong leadership over the years, and I look forward to being the next in line, to be an innovative and supportive leader of Harper Elementary School. As Dr. Lechner pointed out, I'm very fortunate to be in this district that has allowed me to grow, right, from a teacher to assistant principal, and now to becoming the next principal. So with that said, a couple of quick thank-yous. Thank you to the whole High Crest team, everyone involved, teachers, students, and the community for all of the support that they've given me over these last few years. Thank you to Dr. Lechner for all your support and just kind of vision that you've instilled. And thank you, of course, to Kelly Jackson for all your mentorship, incredible kind of guidance and friendship over the last few years. So once again, Board of Education, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I look forward to being the next principal at Harper.
Thank you very much, and congratulations from all of us.
Our next announcement is about the summer enrichment program. Each time of this year, we let the world know that the enrichment program is open until March 18th for registration, so you need to get those registrations in. Already, some of our popular classes, such as Kids in the Kitchen, Sculpture and Ceramics, 3D Printing, and Engineering and Coding are already approaching their maximum limits, so parents be sure to register soon.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, then we're going to move into strategic plan updates, and the first one is instrumental music. This year, to address parent and student concerns about instrumental music sectional rotations, the administration administered an improved pull-out schedule for band and orchestra rotations. In the new student schedule, you'll get the same number of rehearsals as you did in the past, but not miss more than four classes per year in the content area. So we're collecting feedback on the new schedule. The first step is collecting feedback from students. Ms. Lee has this report, and the results look positive.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. As part of last year's strategic plan, District 39 began working with a survey consultant, Shannon Mitchell, and she gathered input and feedback from parents, teachers, and students through focus group conversations and surveys. Through these venues, District 39 gained a better understanding of parents' student preferences, and Ms. Mitchell identified three main barriers and/or what she called pain points about the program. One was getting up early for rehearsals. The other is having a lot of other activities already going on, and the third was missing other classes for instrument-specific small group lessons. The adjusted school day schedule addressed the early morning rehearsals resulting in a later start time, and the small group lesson scheduling was revised to ensure that students would not miss more than four other classes per content area, and it was implemented this year. The following slides will share the student survey results and comments from approximately 412 grade five through eight band or orchestra students. As Dr. Lechner mentioned, the results are positive. Eighty-nine percent of the students are finding that they are able to manage completing missed work for classes missed due to a small group lesson. Sample of the student comments range from no comments, do I enjoy technique classes and think it's good to get the extra practice in? It's usually okay for me, it's fine as long as I remember to check Schoology, I do. It's more of a routine now that I've been in band before. And the two that address the, some of the feedback that we've been received is there are some students that are still feeling as though that they're missing assessments or needing to do some extra homework. When asked about their ability to reschedule in the event of a conflict, 72% of students find it easy to do. The majority of the comments that were left by 145 students out of the 412 was there was nothing else to comment, or I don't have any comments, and that they have not had to reschedule and assume that it was pretty easy if they had to. Monday was a day that reoccurred in the comments, and so we would like to address that. So students who have schedules on Mondays, the process in which to reschedule was a bit more challenging, and it was noted as a pattern. So 89% of students are reporting a positive experience with the new scheduling approach with comments such as, they are fun, it's helpful, and I learn a lot, is being the majority of the comments. Technique class is good, but I wish I did not miss any classes, but I like them. I think the next one is long, so I won't necessarily read word for word, but what it does encompass is, it summarizes what we're trying to address. The fact that they find these classes so meaningful, they enjoy them, they find that they're learning so much, however, how can I balance the work and objects, other conflicts that they have? Which really addressed kind of our next step. So although the results are favorable, we know that more can be done. The instrumental music program teachers and administrators will continue to improve the student experience by supporting students in how to manage the completion of any missed work from classes, and making sure that students are able to reschedule an instrumental-specific small group lesson with ease. So parents will also receive a survey regarding the instrument-specific small group lesson schedule with the same questions, and by the end of May, our goal is to reduce the amount of, or quantity of difficult, very difficult, negative, and very negative ratings. The Board will receive updates throughout this improvement process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board have any questions? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Is there any indication that the kids, that they will have higher participation going forward? You know what I'm talking about, as far as kids dropping it? From five to six, six to seven?
Well, I think in order for us to gauge whether we would increase participation with, to survey the students that are not in band and orchestra right now, one of the, part of our process for, is related with our creative arts at the junior high. And so, as you can see, where the enrollment numbers are decreasing at the junior high, however, the demand for classes like guitar and the African drumming and vocal as an instrument from under music has really increased. That's caused our department to meet and discuss the frequency of these course offerings throughout the year, should we increase them, because that's, that has shown a lot of popularity.
Okay, other questions yet?
Thank you for your report, and kudos for, it's such an incredible kind of thinking outside-of-the-box way of approaching this first step. I just wanted to thank everyone, the teachers and everyone, for coming up with this. I do have a question for the next step. I wanted to know if, moving on, if the next time you do a survey or, as we move forward, you might consider, or if you've talked about, the, we have a lot of students that have executive functioning issues, and I'm wondering if you have gotten feedback or been able to separate out the students with IP's or 504s that have, have been identified with executive functioning issues that have been in the program? If they're experiencing a higher level of frustration with the change, it's a lot of change for those students. I'm just wondering if there's any way, moving forward, to kind of find out a feedback from kind of that group of students, and if there's any way to accommodate that maybe more efficiently in the future, possibly?
Yes, thank you for your feedback. You know, we made the survey anonymous so that we would get very frank and honest responses, and so in order to drill down to that level of whether a student had an IEP or not, we would have to conduct some personal conversations, so I will definitely mention that, and we will discuss it as a possibility. As far as drilling down to the students that are finding things very difficult or just difficult in these questions, we would not be able to tell you whether they have any executive functioning, because it was anonymous, but we'll move forward and consider that, so thank you for your feedback.
Yep, go ahead, Al.
I've got a comment and a question, I think. Comment, I'm really glad you guys are drilling down in the 72% of students who find it a little more difficult to reschedule, and I know that's a little misleading, because some people haven't even rescheduled at all, but we want to make sure that all the students feel like it's easy for them to reschedule if they need to.
I could, so that was one of the reflections, that we wanted to go deeper, we need to go deeper, because the comments didn't reflect the 72%. So we were wondering, you know, well, where do those students, how do they feel, the students that did not make a comment, how do they feel? And so, more than this, I think we need to work with the teachers in having conversations with the students directly. with the students directly.
Okay, thank you. The second is, and it's a little to John's point, I was going to ask the same question. I think you indicated on the second page that there are 522 band and orchestra students right now. We can see the falloff in later grades, and I think as we were reorganizing this whole program, I think one of the worries was that our programs were declining. I think it'll be interesting to kind of keep track of that number moving forward into future years to see if we're increasing or luring more students back into the program, or fewer students are dropping the program as they get into 7th and 8th grade.
Okay, we will.
Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you for the report. I had two comments, one related and one maybe a little bit off target, but that's okay, I'll ask it anyway. So, it occurred to me that some of the work that's being done to support at-home learning during snow cold days, is there any synergies for like the students that miss a core class that some of those muscles, as we're learning how to do that better, could be used to support them on the day that they weren't able to make a math class or an English class?
I guess the short answer would be yes. What we have in place in Grades 5 through 8 is the Learning Management System, which is Schoology, and I think that that could be, that is the way that teachers are communicating with students and offering, you know, directions and assignments in that way. So, I believe it's our current practice to do that already, whether they missed classes or not. So, one of the comments that the student made was, "Well, it'd be great if I check it," and I do, I want you to know that I do. So, I thought that was very voice-specific for the 7th grader that said, "I do check Schoology," but offered that as a suggestion in how you can keep up to speed with the classes and the assignments.
Okay, thank you. Then, the next one, it's not directly related certainly to today's presentation, but I know when we were talking about the band and instrumental programs, there is, there are issues or opportunities or whatever related to our relationship with AVOC, and I know there's been some changes and things associated with that. Do you have any update on that, or is this not the right time to do that?
AVOC is still looking at that right now, but it looks like we're going to continue to move towards a separate program for next year across the board. They're looking at their financial resources and also, you know, their programs. So, that was the latest conversation.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from board members?
Okay, I guess my one comment, first of all, thank you for doing this, no, that's okay. My one comment is that I think, you know, as with all of these things, we should be just a little bit careful on our surveys. There's an, I suspect there's inherent selection bias in students who decide to take the survey versus those who don't, and it's worth thinking about what, how that biases the results, whether, you know, whether that means, oh, well, only the students who can really handle a lot of things, you know, are willing to take the survey, and so maybe they're more positive, or whether it's a more negative bias, I'm not exactly sure, but it's always worth keeping in mind what the biases in such a survey are, and then treating them, you know, appropriately.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much for the report, and I think that takes us up to the strategic plan updates for continuing strategic initiatives.
Yes, as we started a couple of years ago, we do mid-year updates for the board regarding our strategic plan, and tonight we're looking at our continuing strategic initiatives. These are ones that we approved before, and we're in multiple-year implementation, and Katie Lee has this report, as well as the administrative team.
Yes, I am here with the entire team. Thank you, Dr. Lechner. We will begin with kindergarten enrichment. The phased implementation plan that leads District 39 to be able to offer families, a kindergarten enrichment program has begun. Harper and Central Schools will offer a kindergarten enrichment program in the fall of 2020. Since the Harper construction project will require more time, STR Architects began with Harper's design plans, and the plans have been completed and presented to the board during the Committee of the Holes meeting. In March, District 39 will request approval to go out to bid, and by April, approve final bids. Construction will begin in June when the school year ends, and STR has begun this central school renovation design process.
The kindergarten enrichment program committee was established in January and has held two meetings, one in January and one in February. The committee is comprised of administrators and kindergarten teachers from across the district. During the first meeting, representatives represented with the district's plan for offering the optional kindergarten enrichment program to District 39 families. We discussed the timeline for Fall 2020 implementation at Harper and Central. During the second meeting, the representatives explored other districts such as Barrington School District 220 and Downers Grove School District 58, offering a similar type of program. The exploration inspired thoughts and ideas contributing to our first draft statement, and I emphasize draft, statement of the kindergarten enrichment program goals, as you can see on this slide. The remainder of the meeting this year will focus on defining objectives for the program and address logistical elements such as registration and transportation. Next year, the committee will continue with goals and objectives to create a communication plan, develop lessons, review resources, so that we are fully prepared for students to begin kindergarten enrichment in the fall of 2020.
Last year, the administrators learned about personalized learning through sharing and discussing research gathered through articles, books, visiting, interviewing districts, and attending workshops and conferences. This year, the administrators conducted an audit of current practices and reflected on how the district can strengthen the attributes within a personalized learning framework. During one of our audit exercises, we created a heat map using colors to visually represent where we exhibit strengths versus what we need to give our attention. The visual representation helped clearly define our work. For learner profiles, District 39 focused on providing professional development on the use of records and reports for instructional planning and collaborative discussion. For personalized learning paths, District 39 acknowledges the need to investigate more ways or tools that engage and empower students to lead their own learning. For competency-based progressions, although there is a well-established system of assessments, District 39 will continue to learn about assessments and the data that they provide. For flexible learning environments, District 39 has been working on this attribute for several years. The Learning Commons Initiative, as well as mobile learning, Grades 5 through 8 have provided a strong foundation.
As part of our strategic initiative to create a culture of empathy, we implemented a social-emotional screener this fall. All 2nd and 4th grade teachers were asked to fill out the DESA screener for their students. At Grades 5 through 8, students self-reported information using the MESH screener. The DESA is a strengths-based screener measuring eight competencies that include self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, goal-directed behavior, personal responsibility, decision-making, and optimistic thinking. Overall, students in District 39 demonstrated strong social-emotional competencies, with ninety-four percent of students identified as being in the typical or strength category. Six percent of students were identified as needing instruction. Areas often noted for support fell into the areas of personal responsibility and goal-directed behavior. Results from the DESA have assisted in guiding intervention planning, social work supports, and communicating strengths and challenges with parents.
The MESH screener assessed proficiencies on the social-emotional competencies outlined on the table. District 39 students performed well above the national average, achieving at or above the 80th percentile nationally in all categories. Students in Grade 5 are given a different assessment than students in Grades 6 through 8, in that social perspective-taking is not assessed. For all questions, students answer using a five-point Likert scale. For example, given the question, "During the past thirty days, how well did you listen to other people's point of view?" Students can select extremely carefully, quite carefully, somewhat carefully, slightly carefully, or not carefully at all. Answers in the top two options, for example, extremely carefully or quite carefully, are considered positive responses. The DESA and MESH screeners will be given again in the spring to measure growth and
All students in Grades 5 through 8 participated in a school culture survey that assessed students' perceptions related to their sense of belonging, school safety, and teacher-student relationships. The information in this table represents the percentage of students who indicated positive feelings associated with each of these categories. These results were compared against national norms. Areas highlighted in blue indicate areas of strength with scores that fall above the 75th percentile compared with national norms. Areas highlighted in green indicate average scores that are between the 50th and 74th percentile compared with national norms. And finally, the areas highlighted in yellow indicate scores that fall between the 25th and 49th percentile nationally. As you can see, promoting a sense of belonging among our 6th through 8th graders is an area for growth and focus. Example questions related to sense of belonging include, "How well do people in your school understand you as a person?" "How connected do you feel to the adults in your school?" "How much respect do people at your school show you?" And overall, "How much do you feel like you belong at your school?" You might remember that we also discussed a similar question when we looked at the results from the 8th grade survey that came through from last year, and we were looking to raise the numbers of students who shared that they had at least one connection with an adult at the school. In order to address this sense of belonging and the connection, staff at Highcrest and at Willmet Junior High have undertaken the relationship mapping process, which is outlined by Harvard's Making, Carrying, Common Project. Relationship mapping entails a three- or four-step process throughout the school year. We've kind of adjusted it for our timelines. And we began looking at every student in the school and as a staff, marking those who we felt had positive relationships, as well as those who we felt did not have positive relationships or were at risk of having not-so-great relationships or connections with adults from our perspective. From there, we gathered the students who were at risk, the names of the students who we felt were at risk of having little to no positive connection, and our instructional teams or houses at Highcrest worked together to create plans for reaching out and connecting. And then, we took those lists and also went through with our related arts, world language, and PE teachers so that they could also identify any of the kids that they had connections with or were working on connecting with. From there, plans were developed and plans for how different teachers were going to pick a few kids on their team or on the list and how they might connect with them. We also talked about risk factors for some of those students, such as things going on at home, or maybe they were struggling academically. We really focused on the SEL part of it and the sense of belonging, but we know academics plays in with some of that as well. And we used the information that we had from the culture survey given earlier in the year to cross-reference information and see how individual student responses fell out. So, we could have a student on one of our lists, and we could compare their answers, and then there may have been students in, from this survey that didn't come out on our relationship mapping, that we wanted to be sure that we were catching as well. This process, as I mentioned, is three to four steps. We've kind of gone through the first two, and teams now are holding each other accountable for starting those, that connection process and the intervention with the kids. It could be as simple as just saying hi and asking how your weekend was, or how the night before was with a student, to a meeting with a student for lunch, or something more involved. But they're holding each other accountable right now in developing those plans. They're going to check back with each other in about four to five weeks, and the GLADS are leading those conversations. And then, at the end of the year, we're going to review the whole process again and go through the entire list and really look and see where we've made progress. We'll also, again, revisit the school culture survey. We've been doing some other things to continue with the sense of belonging and inclusivity on the 5-8 campus. We've done Start With Hello Week, where we've made efforts to do different things to help each student feel involved and say hello, and notes on lockers, those sorts of things, restorative circles, classroom-community circles, and we have our student advisory boards at each grade level who really focus on the climate and culture. We've also been working with our PTO clubs to promote, especially our highly-inclusive clubs, such as High Five Choir, which has grown from about fifteen participants a couple of years ago to almost sixty right now, which is amazing, and the, just the results and the performances and the way that kids talk about being a part of that group just warms your heart. We were approached by students earlier this year, and actually over the summer as well, and are now working with students and staff in exploring, starting possibly a Gay-Straight Alliance at both of the schools, GSA for short. So, right now, I'm working with the inclusivity teams of adults at each school. We're exploring the structure of various clubs at the middle school levels in our area, we're talking to a lot of different people that have them, and looking to see what the best approach might be for our unique buildings and our age levels. There's a lot of different options and training that can go into that, so right now, we're just doing an exploration of that. Additionally, I've been talking with the PTO at the junior high about lunch options, and if we have the ability to offer some expanded drop-in lunch or recess, kind of club-type things, but more of a drop-in structure where students would have other alternatives to going out to recess or going to the LC. So, those things are all in the works in the hope of improving on these numbers moving
Okay, the District 39 Social, Emotional, and Learning Committee started the year off by reviewing the effectiveness of our current curricula, including Facing History in Ourselves and Second Step. Teachers for Grades 5 through 8 shared that students continued to struggle with the buy-in for Second Step, and while Facing History in Ourselves had many lessons aligned with our current needs, I'm sorry, had a few lessons aligned with our current needs, many of the lessons were really geared for older students. The committee then looked at the data from the SEL screeners and created a scope and sequence of currently-used positive behavioral supports by Castle Domain, and you see the Castle icon up on the screen. Additionally, the committee created a continuum of social-emotional competencies for all grade levels, kindergarten through 8th grade. A cross-reference of all current data supported the need for additional resources with a focus on helping students build a positive sense of belonging in the school setting.
Okay, next is student growth. Within the past year and a half, District 39 has acquired tools needed to further our efforts in supporting student growth and monitoring our progress. Since these tools were new to all staff, we introduced the platforms and trained on how to access the data and the reports. So, first, what you see on the screen is a dashboard by EduClima, which allows for easy access to all assessment data in one location. The dashboard is personalized for each teacher, specialist, and administrator, and information can be viewed at many levels: individual students, classroom, grade level, school level, and district-wide. This is an example of a data wall that provides information at a glance. Continued training is necessary and will continue throughout the year. A second tool is the map assessment. Although there are many reports available to teachers, the two that will assist most with instructional planning are the Student Achievement Status and the Growth Report, and the Learning Continuum by subject matter. The teachers have been trained on how to access, as well as use these reports as a guide to discuss students, and this will also be ongoing. Another tool acquired this year is Ames Web Plus, and this tool provides student data, reports, and tools to monitor progress for students who are receiving supportive interventions. In addition, administrators collaboratively restructured the intervention leadership teams to include representatives from each grade level and embedded the inclusion of student growth data to the response intervention process. The image shows you Grades K through 4, 5-8 is the same but organized by teacher teams. The intervention leadership teams and grade-level teacher teams use quantitative assessment data and qualitative classroom performance data to determine how they can differentiate instruction and what curriculum resources match the learner's needs within the classroom and/or a designated time during the day. They also discuss other factors that may influence student growth, such as learning history, habits, mindset, and time management. As administrators, we've noticed an increase in data center discussions with the use of these tools and organizational structures, so we know that that will continue.
Over the past three years of implementation, we have made progress toward our goal of increasing positive attendance to seventy-five percent. Positive attendance means being present ninety-five percent of the time or more. At the time, attendance in tardy data was At the time, attendance and tardy data was collected in mid-February. A student was considered to be in the positive category if he or she had fewer than five absences or tardies. A student is considered to be chronic if they have missed 10% or more of school days. At this time in the year, a student was considered chronic if he or she was absent or tardy for 10 days or more. As of February 15th, 72% of our students were in the positive attendance category. Continued efforts have focused on the routine monitoring of attendance data in each of our buildings and using that data to provide tiered systems of supports with more specific and individualized support for students in the chronic categories. In 2017, following a careful analysis of students who were identified as being chronically absent, we found that many of these students were experiencing some form of school anxiety and avoidance. With that in mind, we have continued to provide staff and parents with learning opportunities to address this and promote strategies for building students' resilience. Partnering with parents has been an integral component of this effort, and parents are provided with monthly attendance reports. New this year was the addition of tardy data on the monthly parent communication. Late and tardy information has been incorporated into our routine monitoring process as we believe that students miss out on important learning opportunities when they are consistently late to school. Further, research on improving attendance has highlighted chronic tardies as a predictor of future chronic absences. Final positive attendance outcomes for the 2018-19 school year, along with future recommendations, will be shared in June.
STR partners, architects, have been working with our Building 4Cs and Special Education Staff, 4Cs Committee, and Special Education Staff on the design and development of the High Crest Learning Commons Edition and remodel of the special education classrooms. Design plans and cost estimates have been reviewed at the Facility Development Committee meetings throughout the year. And the district went out to bid in January. We'll be requesting board approval for bids this evening. The new special education remodel will have an efficiency kitchen, a sensory room for students particularly who would participate in adaptive PE classes, more small-group spaces, as well as larger spaces dedicated for instruction. And there will also be a new conference room. The Learning Commons Edition will include a maker space, a large presentation space, and several small-group rooms. Due to its location, one feature that is exciting is a wall of windows to the outdoor classroom that will set the tone for the indoor space for the Learning Commons as well as allow for movement between the indoors and outdoors into the current outdoor classroom area. You can see that kind of pictured in that bottom area there. We've had a committee working on envisioning the redevelopment of the outdoor classroom space as well, as Alice mentioned earlier. Due to construction timing, the district worked with STR for the initial hardscape and drainage design for the outdoor classroom and has discussed a phased-in plan, with the hardscape being that first phase and then looking at the green planting and design for the current outdoor classroom space. And then finally, looking at expanding our gardens to spaces between different areas in the school. The Outdoor Classroom Committee is meeting in March, and Phase 2, which is the design for the planting in the current outdoor classroom space, is expected to be completed in the spring of 2020 after the Learning Commons construction is completed. It's a really, really exciting space.
So, the Ramona Learning Commons is a hub of learning that constantly asks students to use the 4Cs: collaboration, creativity, communication, and critical thinking. So, in these pictures, you can see that we transform the flexible learning space to spark creativity and collaboration, as seen in our STEAM days, such as the first-grade Inartica Day on the left, where our first graders learned all about penguins through a variety of engaging activities. We engage all students from early childhood through fourth grade in critical thinking and communication, as seen in our design and coding challenges that connected to our school-wide author visit from Kate Kleiss earlier this year. We welcome in the community on our Open Learning Commons nights to encourage our Mustangs to teach their families all about the 4Cs and the learning that's happening in the Learning Commons. Throughout the year, we've assessed our students on how they use the 4Cs in the Learning Commons by asking them to fill out a survey. The students scan a QR code using an iPad after an activity, such as Lunch Bunch, our Open Learning Commons time that happens during recess. And then they fill out the survey, sharing which of the 4Cs they used that day. We've learned that, on average, students feel that they're using three of the 4Cs every day in the Learning Commons. So the 4Cs are constantly happening in our space.
So McKenzie is also in its second year of the Learning Commons. Like Ramona, a lot of exciting things have been happening, so just a few pictures to reflect that and some examples. So in one of the pictures, you can see our students using the Sphero robots that the D39 Ed Foundation purchased for all of our schools. Students used the design process to plan and create a mini golf hole. The project incorporated 21st-century skills with challenging, engaging, and creative activities. There were lots of opportunities for differentiation and technology integration. Students brainstormed ideas, drew a blueprint for their design, and used their creativity to build special features and hazards, as you might see on a mini golf course. Having students build and design holes allowed for students to reflect and readjust their design as needed. Students then used coding to maneuver the Sphero through the course with the ultimate goal of teaching a partner how to play the game. Another example is how we are tying literature to our maker space. So while the students were reading a book, they were then challenged with designing a bird feeder that would keep squirrels out to correlate with the book. Students evaluated different bird types and their needs for a bird feeder, took those needs and applied it to design for an appropriate prototype. This activity incorporated engineering design standards. The lesson included problem-solving, planning, perseverance, presentation, self-imperial evaluation. McKenzie students have created short reflection videos as they complete STEAM projects, sharing successes, failures, how more time would influence their work, and what supplies could improve their designs. Reflection is an area we are all working hard to incorporate into our daily practice.
We are now extending our vision from our Learning Commons into our classrooms, as I'm sure you may be expecting. The key here is that the configuration of learning spaces needs to be determined by and aligned to the purpose of instructional practices and the needs of the learner. Harper, Central, and Ramona schools are in Phase 1. In this initial phase of our long-term project, our elementary schools are repurposing classrooms in a very limited budget. Our teachers are getting creative. Many classrooms removed half of their traditional desks in exchange for more flexible, open environment that provides many options for learning. Some desks are being pushed together. Tables had legs cut off to make them lower for floor seating. Bedposts are being used to add tables to rise them higher for students who prefer to stand while learning. Various seating options are found at garage sales and others are donated furniture by parents. Even though the budget option allows for flexible, multi-use seating and table options, does not allow for seamless transitions between activities or dynamic learning, and they are not universally designed. We were able to create one dream classroom in second grade at Central. As you can see in the photos to the right, having one large community table under the "dream" option allows students to share resources, collaborate, and communicate versus trying to push desks together like the budget option. Simply pushing desks together does not achieve the goal. It's very isolating and restricts movement and is not really conducive to supporting learning through the 4Cs. So during our pilot year at Central, we created a school committee, researched best practices, and visited other local districts who all have flexible and innovative learning environments, including Oneeka, Sunset Ridge, Glenview District 34, Skokie District 72.5, and Northville District 29. We're also giving surveys to our students and staff to determine the optimal learning environment for our students. The long-term plan for our elementary schools is to redesign our classrooms slowly over time in collaboration with students, staff, district, and PTA as we continue to conduct research throughout the pilot and investigate a wide variety of furnishings, technology, and space required for students and teachers to have the very best 21st-century learning space possible. And now I'm going to reintroduce Rachel so she can show you what implementation looks like in Phase 2 district-wide at McKenzie School.
Thank you. So McKenzie is in Phase 2 of our flexible classroom initiative. So the pilot started in 2015-16. Dr. Walter had gotten some funds to provide two classrooms with a flexible classroom. So what this is, it's sparked conversation at McKenzie. Last year, as you know, we received our beautiful Learning Commons, which, again, sparked more conversation. We were very fortunate that our PTA had funds. They contributed $130,000 to McKenzie last year and outfitted 15.5 classrooms with new furniture for this school year. So we have a few phases of training. Last year, in June, we had Part 1 of our flexible classroom training. And now, we are living with our new furniture, which has been another piece of research for us, reflection. We're gaining feedback. Before we got our furniture this year, we were able, like Central, to pilot one classroom that was outfitted with the furniture that we were considering. So now, we're looking at our storage, seating options, desks, tables, to see what is working best for us. We have a committee made up of our PTA staff, which includes grade level, special ed, physical therapists, and paraprofessionals. We had a training in November after Quarter 1. Once we were able to live in the environment, we wanted to see what more we can learn from the experts. And now that we are nearing, or we have neared, the end of Quarter 2, our committee reps are going out to their prospective teams and gathering ideas, suggestions, feedback, so that we can plan for Phase 2. So, yes, it is comfortable. We can all see that. But we're looking at how it's impacted instruction and what are ways to continue to enhance instructional practices based on our new environments. It all comes back to providing a learning environment that meets the needs of all learners. The bottom line is that there is something for everyone in these classrooms. So now, we're on to furniture selection for Phase 2. We are very fortunate that our PTA continues to fund this initiative at McKenzie. So what will Phase 2 look like? We're finding that out right now as we're meeting. So which classrooms will support? Should we consider common areas to increase student workspace? But as a committee, we will prioritize, and the best is yet to come.
If I may, before we field some questions, I'd like to share just one more thought to end this presentation. Although personalized learning is listed as its own initiative, it struck me, when we were reviewing the last few years, how many district initiatives contribute to the personalized learning framework initiative. So this by no means is a comprehensive list, but a sampling of how District 39's focus has always been on meeting the needs of students. And using those attributes, I took the liberty of categorizing some of our initiatives for you to say that we seem to constantly be focusing on student needs. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, all of you, for the hard work and for the report. Does the board have questions at this time? Go ahead. Who would like to start? John, you ready to go? Go for it. I have a half-baked question, which won't surprise you. So, thank you. This is great. I'm going to focus on personalized learning. I think the thing, this is great. I really appreciate, I know a ton of work has gone into this. And I'm not sure about, you know, where my concern belongs, but I think it does belong. So what I'm not seeing is where the parents come in to personalize learning. You know, I mean, I'm thinking of my own children, right? Who are great and they're very self-directed. But it's, you know, they don't do everything on their own. You know what I mean? At a certain age, they would need more parental input, and, you know, as they get older, maybe less. But I think that's something I would suggest be included in these plans. Interested in what you think, Ray? So we are very early in this process. What you saw today are the structures in terms of data. We've got the data information that we need to be able to set up. So you're exactly right. The kids at younger grades would need a lot more structure and options, but they can still make choices within options that are given them. But we're still in the early phases of development. Anything to add, Katie?
Well, one of the tenets of personalized learning is to empower students in that process. So, of course, we would partner with parents in understanding how to encourage that a little bit more. But what we're hopeful for is not just parents, but teachers and the child themselves can define, here are my goals, and this is what I'd like to do to reach them. So, as Dr. Lekner shared, we are at the beginning phase of this, and we will continue to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm just going to dovetail on the personalized learning question. In terms of what's next, am I to assume, or are we to assume, that the reflection category is what you're going to do next?
Either do next or we are doing right now. So, for example, the learner profile piece. I think when I shared with you about the student growth and the reports and the data, what that does is provide us information about each learner. So we've begun that training, education, and realized that we are actually taking steps toward, you know, the full framework.
Just want to make sure I understood your question. You didn't mean the reflection stage in the strat plan.
I'm saying in the strat plan.
We're not ready for it to move to the next level.
So I guess my question then, Ray, is what happens next?
Yeah. So we have not done the early rush on this because when you have a new superintendent coming in, so there needs to be a lot more deeper diving into the instructional practices. All we have set up is a framework with technology and data and assessment with some good ideas and some kind of higher-level structure. But there's a lot more to do, and that will address both of your concerns. We haven't gotten to the meat, the deep meat, yet.
Okay. I have another question. Should I hold it? A lot of people ask. I'm going to move to school climate, which we all know is really important. So I was surprised by the low numbers in terms of the sense of belonging information. And so I'm wondering, were you surprised? I know that the district's done a lot of work to create a culture, especially even amongst the two campuses. And I heard that you're doing lots of things to work on it, but have you asked the kids what the problem is and what they think we should be doing?
Yeah, and that's actually, yes, we were surprised by this. And I think it was something that we kind of felt at the start of the year, and then after getting these results, we saw it even more plainly. And so, that's actually a conversation that we have with our student advisory boards on a regular basis, talking to them about where they see holes, how can we help, what kinds of ideas do they have for helping promote a sense of belonging. I think some of the things that I mentioned with respect to expanding some of our more inclusive club offerings, options, those have come from kids. Those ideas have come from kids approaching us or approaching their teachers and giving us those suggestions. So we're really trying hard to listen to our kids, what they want, what they need, and try to put those into place in an appropriate way that helps to support and make things more inclusive for everybody. So, yes, it's a work in progress, certainly, but we hope to see those numbers rise.
I want to add to that. I had an opportunity to observe a group of teachers working at the junior high, where they are literally identifying individual students who they feel may not have that connection with individualized plans. And they're not these big IEPs, but they are like, okay, this child is on my watch list. I'm going to reach out to them. I'm going to make some connections. And I just love that. I just love that. That was awesome.
Yeah, the relationship mapping process has been really beneficial. I think as a staff, we've seen the value in it. It's been interesting to have conversations with different groups of teachers about how, you know, you kind of knew that you weren't connecting with a certain kid, but really talking about specific ways that we could go out and really try to connect with, even just some small steps, and make a difference in that child's life and help them to feel more connected. It's been a really constant theme since we started this process, and the teachers are really invested in it.
So just one more follow-up and I'll let other people go, but it just seemed that 50%, just about, right, are not feeling that sense of connection. And that feels like it's just not a couple outliers that teachers need to connect with, that there may be more systemic problems. And I just want to request that we revisit this as a board and just get a report on how it's going, the efforts are going.
Right. We'll have follow-up information in the summer, in May, June.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. That's fine.
I'm good.
Okay.
Is that okay? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ellen.
To follow up on what Lisa just said, I'm wondering, in regards to school climate, a couple of things. a couple of things. I know that we implement and have looked at quite a few programs, and that we are using a lot of different programs. And I guess I have a couple of questions and concerns. And one of the things that I wanted to know was, if we actually have, and if we do, I apologize, but I guess I haven't seen it, if we have a roadmap, like an actual map of what we expect our students, how we expect our students' age, you know, on a growth chart, age by age, okay, 'cause I'd like to, I would love to see it, what we expect from students at particular ages to achieve in terms of their social-emotional growth. Because one of the things that I hadn't heard, that I was expecting to see or hear, that ties in, was a social action component, because I believe that that truly builds into empathy and understanding, there's, I mean, that's a large part. And as kids become sixth, seventh, eighth graders, and I know we do social action programs, but when you're talking about, you know, culture of empathy and all that, that becomes part, a very massive part of a program, right?
Absolutely. That is a significant portion of our social studies curriculum, but we are working on a continuum, I'll let Angela talk a little bit about that.
So as part of the social-emotional learning committee, we have identified skills that we feel like our students should be learning in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. And then we've also outlined current practices that we're implementing at every grade level, and those are aligned with the CASL domains. And CASL is the collaborative for academic and social-emotional learning, so they're kind of the gold standard, if you will, of what students should be learning as far as social-emotional competencies. So we are working on it, we are identifying that we need to bring in probably some more resources and materials to kind of support what we already have, and that's currently where we're at with the social-emotional learning committee.
I think one of the things that I would find helpful, and maybe it's just a pulling it all together aspect of it, what I would like to see, because I also view, there's an aspect of, there's an aspect of school climate that crosses over into a collaborative, very collaborative thing with parents. And it involves parent-students, and, I mean, it's a whole community thing. And so, if parents aren't aware or completely understanding the entire structure of the program and what the roadmap is, then it's difficult to have a back and forth. So, what I would love to see is that roadmap at some point.
Okay.
And I do think that, back to what Lisa was saying, that sense of belonging then would, you know, there's a lot of explanation that it would seem would be in, might be, you know, within that, might be, you know, within some of the programming or the goals and things that could be targeted or found within that, or the missing pieces.
That's good feedback, yeah, certainly.
I just wanna remind us that we're mid-year in a strat plan, so we're not gonna have the whole picture done till the end of the year, but the feedback was excellent, because we'll make sure that that's part of that end of year.
I will share that with the committee, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments, thoughts? Go ahead, Frank.
I had a couple. I was looking, and as Lisa had pointed out, on some of the school climate numbers. And some of that I thought may have been, you know, as the kids get a little older, they get a little bit more cynical on how they respond to surveys and all that type of stuff. But then, the attendance data seemed to reinforce that. There seems to be a significant difference between fifth and sixth, and seventh and eighth. And getting numbers up to the 9% number for chronic, I mean, I think this reinforces why it was important that we started looking at attendance, but 9% chronic is not a good number. And especially not a good number that it doubled it from fifth and sixth. And the tardy numbers are even more significant, so I thought maybe, you know, it's like getting to a bigger school, and they're not their neighborhood, you know, they have a little harder time getting to class, and then fifth and sixth tardy numbers were much smaller, and then the seventh and eighth skyrocketed. So, I think the correlation between the school climate and the attendance data is important and potentially points to an area of focus that's not just the average. You know, 6% the average attendance data is a nice way to measure, but I think the fact that we're looking at this, that we've found an area that I think, I know you have been working on it, but I mean, I'm particularly interested in seeing that number come down, because if it's 9% in eighth grade, and the difficulties and maturity of things, starting as a freshman, it goes up from there, it doesn't go down.
I'll just respond to that. I think that is definitely an area of concern. Romy and I have been talking about that as well, and something that we wanna continue to dive into. Just from anecdotally, we've also had a lot of, a lot more conversation at seventh and eighth grade, especially about the number of reports, not necessarily reports, but situations involving more anxiety, and that's the type of behavior. And kids saying that they feel more anxious and more nervous around homework, but around schoolwork and about social things as well. And so digging more deeply into what that is and how that plays into attendance, as well as their self, or sense of belonging, I think is going to be important. To that end, we are doing some parent education with anxiety in a couple weeks with our PTO, and looking to do some more things with staff and students in the future as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I mean, you've identified it and that you're working on it, I just was reiterating that trends in seventh and eighth grade skyrocket in freshman year, and some of the numbers that I've heard from New Trier, it doesn't get better. So the more we can do to make these numbers better in seventh and eighth grade, the better foundation that they have. And I know that's what you're doing, but I just kind of wanted to reiterate that. I also had a question, and I'm not sure what the right next step for it is. On the student growth, there were a lot of really interesting screenshots that I did not have a chance to, say, internalize. So, I wanted to see if there is some way that we could educate the board better on this. I mean, there's six or seven really interesting, I can almost read them, but they look colorful and important. But obviously not at the level to really understand them, so.
Absolutely, sorry.
I'd like to see, well, no, no, I'd like to, I'd like to see some kind of plan for how we could be better educated at that little bit deeper level than the screenshots.
Okay, would you like it at a different time, or?
You don't have to answer the question right now, but I'd like you to think about what would be a good way to do that.
Sure, absolutely. I was trying to use the images to show you what our tools were in general, but I'm happy to present at a different time, a little more in-depth on each of the tools.
Okay, thank you. Maybe at a strategy committee meeting or something.
Absolutely.
Okay, other questions? Lisa?
So, I was a big fan of the learning comments, and I'm a super big fan of the flexible classroom environment. Super exciting. So I guess I'm wondering, is there a plan to take this pilot district-wide, understanding that resources are a challenge?
We are continuing to be very creative where the funding source might be, to provide what the dream kind of scenario. As you can see, a lot of the teachers and the principals have worked hard on being creative and how to create these flexible spaces without that. But our hope is that we could continue to generate ideas on how we can get some funding to support district-wide.
Other questions? Do you have more?
Yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I wanna go back to Frank's piece on student growth, and I want a second, I would love just to understand a little bit more. And then I'm just wondering, it feels complex to me, can you just describe how you're doing? You said there's a lot of PD for staff, what are you doing?
So, why don't I start over here? So this platform was programmed last year, we purchased it the end of two years ago. So what, the work that needed to be done is taking all of our historical data that we had stored in a different platform and embedded in here. The data wall here, I know that those colors are nice, but it's a visual representation. And what we had to do as an administrative team, and my department worked on how to program at the back end, so that it displays in the way that we, as District 39, want to evaluate our assessment data. So what that does is it gives you at a glance information about the students with any piece of data we have. We have everything from MAP in reading, reading and math, we have AIMS Web+, we have classroom data, we have so much stored in here that we are just beginning this process. So, all last year, it took that long in order to prepare this data. And then on top of that, we had MAP that we purchased, and this is the second year. In order for the growth piece to be projected, we needed two years of data. So, we have that now, and it's also embedded into this data warehouse. So what, it's, we've been working on it, the district and the administrators and the department have been working on it, but the teachers have just only heard about it. So this year has been, how do you log in? How do you work the dashboard? What is a data wall? This is how you can sort it, so that they can get the information to display in the way that was meaningful for their discussions. And then, on top of, this is a graphic that you're very familiar with, and we have worked on trying to help the teachers understand, as a district, we're looking at growth, we're looking at the pink and the yellow quadrants, and looking at those students, and seeing how we can make them grow over time. And so what this report does is then connect you to what we call the learning continuum, that at a glance, which the other assessment did not have, can group your students and offer you objectives and goals that they're ready to learn. And so, all this information, this data, is now set in front of teacher teams and the intervention leadership teams, and they talk about the students and collaboratively make decisions on how to differentiate instruction. So that, all of that training needed to happen in order for them to actually access and use this information on a more regular basis. And that's what we've noticed, is that the teachers are referring to these documents, whereas they may not have in the past with other assessments.
Yes, I wanna step in, that what you're talking about is parent education as well. If the board has a need for understanding and knowledge, that means parents will too. We're not there yet. But we need to make sure that that's on our list either for next year, our next step in the strategic plan, you know, we gave you a lot of slides that are more teacher-focused and less parent-focused. So we need to do a good job of developing PD for parents that everybody can easily understand and will help them understand this complex process. So, yes.
Other questions from board members? Yep, go ahead.
This is for kindergarten enrichment. Just a quick, this has to do with the draft, and I know it's a draft. Thank you for the draft, it's a wonderful draft. But I have one question or favor to ask, I guess, has to do with consistency of messaging. And it gets back to school climate, 'cause I'm stuck on school climate tonight. So, because you are so deep into school climate, and really, you know, taking such a wonderful look at it and working hard on it, I just, when you nail down the kindergarten enrichment statement, if you can just make sure that it reflects what we really, really come up with as, you know, our mission in school climate, and there's two words missing, for me at least, that I just wanted to throw out there, just a suggestion, but empathy and resiliency were two things that are built into our school climate right now that we're looking at deeply, and it was just something that I noticed, and for what it's worth.
Thank you.
I made note of it here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other thoughts or questions or comments? Okay, I have a couple real quick. I'm gonna shock everybody by talking about growth. But I will be creative. One of the things I just wanted to commend you on, as you mentioned, the, under the school climate, and the DESA and the MEAS, as well as this school climate survey, you know, looking at that over time. And I think even though there's a, there is a real difference between the way we look at ourselves in academic measures versus national norms, and the way we look at ourselves in social-emotional versus national norms, but I still think that the comparison versus national norms is less helpful than the comparison versus ourselves. And that, you know, goes to the growth mindset, that we're all trying to have our kids learn, and we wanna make sure that we're learning as well. So I'm really, I appreciate you saying, yep, we're looking at that over time, we're gonna see how that develops, 'cause I think that really is the most important measure. Very tactical question for Katie on the student growth dashboards. Can you see whether teachers are looking at these reports? Is that something you can monitor in the software? Or how do we know whether they are actually going in and looking at the reports?
No, you cannot see whether they've logged into EduClima or MAP, but we could anecdotally tell you, we have traveled the district, we meaning my department, and worked with teachers. We still have a few more schools to hit. But I know that the teachers have referenced it when they ask us questions, the differentiation support teachers have asked us questions, and also referenced, hey, in this growth quadrant, this is what we noticed. So there's a lot that we are observing firsthand that these reports are being accessed. In addition, the data meetings, you wanna add?
Oh, I was just gonna add that. Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna say, at the 5-8 level, I just know that we've been, we've trained all of our ILT leaders and reps, so they're accessing them. They've become commonplace as a part of our discussion at data meetings and at our regular, even just team and house meetings. So much so that there are teachers that are going, hey, let me get into that. So, people are starting to explore, a couple of the features, not necessarily related to academics, but that we can also track in EduClima, that we're starting to grow at the 5-8 level, are the behavior tracking. So we've been having conversations about how to have teachers experiment with some of that, as far as our conduct forms go and even larger incidents. And then also, attendance data is tracked in there too. So that's a great way for us to now go back and look at attendance and academics and all of that good stuff, so.
I think that goes to what Frank was sharing, how maybe I can show you what the features are in a little bit more detail. But, you know, across the board, all of our schools, actually, it was one of our action items to do some behavior tracking and attendance, and that is reflected at the upper part with the bar graph and the circle graphs up there. So I can explain a little bit more. And just as a funny aside for me, you know, whenever we try to roll out initiatives, usually the feedback from our teachers is like, slow down, don't, please don't, you're overwhelming us. And for this particular tool, they've been asking me, could you hurry it up a little? There's other features in here, there's smart forms, and there's different ways that you could graph. And I've been trying to be, I don't know, mindful and helpful in not overloading, so that we could really, but this has really taken on an energy among the teachers far more than I expected and was ready for, actually. So we're ready to move forward in some of the other features that it can provide.
Well, that's terrific, I'm really happy to hear it, and I love the fact that we have a district, and teachers, administrators, a culture which is hungers for the data-driven The, you know, and what I'll look forward to seeing over time, this is terrific that we've got sort of the description level of data, and it's gonna, I know that we're early, and I get it, it's gonna be great when we start having the goals set around growth and, you know, how we're developing. So the first step is obviously, okay, now you can see, you know, and now, okay, and now how are we going to set a goal to do better? Right, you can't do that until you can see and understand, and so I'm glad we're on the first step, and looking forward to the second.
And you can expect a full separate
And, and you can expect a full separate report um, in June, separate from the review of the strategic plan. Um, the reason we want to do that is now that we have two years of data, we can also, uh, we're less limited in our growth projections, and so we'd like to share with you all of that information. You can see the trend over time.
Terrific. I will uh, look forward to that. Go ahead, Frank.
Um, and I, I just had one more quick one, or maybe not quick, but um, we, we need to be careful, we don't lose the, um, if there are any differences between boys and girls on a lot of these characteristics, um, I still someday want to come back to the ELA test score differences between the boys and the girls. But on some of these emotional things and, and some of the differentiated learning, um, if we have that information, that, that's important data. If we look at it for a while and there's no statistical differences, that's great. But if we look at it and we find something, then, then that's something that we should also be discussing.
So um, I, I believe you're asking for multiple student group formations or criteria that also includes gender as part of it?
Yeah, so what, like when we get, you know, the scatter plots, if it turns out that, you know, eighty percent of the dots that are below the line are one gender or the other, that has some value to, to the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
That's just one small example. Thank you.
All right. Any other thoughts? Big report, a ton of work, lots of people. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Obviously, the board really interested in the, all of the topics, so we really appreciate it. Uh, great. And that takes us on to our annual business.
Yes, now we're ready for uh, summer 2019 High Crest construction bids. I'm happy to report that we had many qualified bidders, and the bids uh, came back lower than was estimated. And as indicated earlier from Kelly, all the work at High Crest and the middle school will begin this summer, and Ms. Crispino has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. On February thirteenth, we had the bid opening for High Crest Construction Project, and just as a reminder, that includes the Library Media Technology Center addition with large space air conditioning and the special education classroom renovation. The total base bids came in at three point five million dollars, which was approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars less than we had estimated at the January two thousand nineteen committee of the whole meeting. Included in this base bid is approximately three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the large space air conditioning in the library media technology center. We have worked closely with Nicholas and Associates and STR throughout this process, and we are recommending approval of the construction bid tonight. Colby from STR is here tonight to answer any questions also that the board members have about the construction project.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Colby, I'm sorry you came out for no reason.
We appreciate all your support, Colby, though.
One, one quick, yeah, go ahead.
I want to thank Colby. Colby, thank you for providing that really wonderful drawing of the roof, a series of sketches of the roof that explained the, the way that the snow falls on the roof very, very, very well. I really, really appreciated that information.
All right. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for that report. Next up?
Sorry.
Okay, next we're ready to address e-cigarette use in District 39. As a follow-up board request, this report summarizes efforts District 39 has taken towards e-cigarettes or vaping since the beginning of the school year, and we've had a few reports of e-cigarette use in District 39, specifically at Willmet Junior High School. Ms. Jackson has this report.
All right. Uh, we have seen a rise in the number of reports of vaping or e-cigarette use activities since the beginning of the school year. Last year, we had only a few reports, and none of those were related um, to activity on school grounds. It was mostly um, things maybe people had seen other people doing outside of school. Uh, the year before, we had one incident of vaping that took place on the bus that was confirmed. Um, this year, administrators have received reports of vaping activity, um, both on and off of school grounds, and we've had three confirmed incidents that happened on school grounds this year. Reports have been received via the confidential reporting form that we have at, at Willmet Junior High, uh, parent phone calls, and students sharing information in perp, in person. Our school experience has mirrored, mirrored the national reports of growth in vaping by teens and pre-teens. Um, and then some of those stats are up on the screen. According to a University of Michigan study, in fact, vape use by eighth graders has doubled from, this is nationwide, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, and they're expecting a continued rise in the next year. Um, so uh, it is a pretty serious situation, and um, we chose to address that um, in several ways. But first, a little background on what vaping is or e-cigarette use, just to educate all of you. Vapes or vape pens are synonymous with the word e-cigarettes. Students will also refer to vapes as juuling, uh, which is after the name brand of one of the most popular vape pens or vape devices. You can see it pictured there in the um, left corner of the screen. All of these terms are used to describe the use of e-cigarettes or electronic cigarettes. So instead of a traditional cigarette where tobacco is lit with a flame and inhaled, electronic cigarettes utilize vape juice whereby a charge is given to the device and the juice is vaporized so users can inhale it. While we have much research on the effect of nicotine from cigarettes, uh, there is much less research on the effects of vaping due to the fact that e-cigarette devices have only been on the market in the United States since two thousand and six. What we do know is that flavored vape juices, often marketed as fun and tasty with flavors such as bubble gum, gummy bear, juice roll up, like fruit roll up, uh, and more, are targeting teens with the over seven thousand flavors on the market, many of which contain har, harmful if ingested chemicals such as diacetyl and glycerin. So diacetyl is what's, um, it, it's in popcorn. Uh, and if you remember, several years ago, there was a, a situation where um, in factories that were producing popcorn, the diacetyl was ingested or inhaled, and then it created popcorn lung, which is a, a situation where there's kind of, it, it burns your lungs basically. Um, so diacetyl is okay for eating, but not for inhaling. Um, and when you are inhaling vape juice, you are inhaling diacetyl. Similarly, uh, glycerin is in uh, many of the vape juices. Again, okay for ingesting or eating, but when we're inhaling it, we don't know what the effects are, and they could be harmful. Many vape juices also contain liquid or nicotine in liquid form, such as Juul. All Juul products contain nicotine, which is often not known to kids. Um, and some vape juices even contain marijuana. Because of the little regulation on these products, uh, many of these substances are not listed on the ingredients in the vape juices, so our kids, if they're buying them, may not know what they're inhaling. We are however, making some progress. Last March, the Village of Willmet joined many surrounding areas in passing an amendment to the village code limiting the sale of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, to those over the age of twenty-one. Uh, this is helpful in preventing students at our schools from purchasing vaping products at gas stations or convenience stores around, um, but they may still be purchased online. Um, our top priority is to make school a safe, healthy learning environment for all students, so it's been incumbent upon us to take steps to enhance what we are doing proactively with students, staff, and families. In order to proactively address the rise in vaping that has been seen across the country and also at Willmet Junior High, we've taken several steps with students, staff, and families. We've talked about what vaping is, some of the health risks and strategies to avoid vaping and general peer pressure. With our students, Katie and I met with our health teachers across uh, sixth through eighth grade and talked about where we can enhance the discussions on vaping in those classrooms. So um, really, at sixth grade, it's um, you know, it's developmentally appropriate, what it is, what it might look like. And then as you get into seventh and eighth grade, it's a more in-depth conversation about the effects. Um, and in fact, our uh, health teacher Danielle Peterman at the junior high brought in Andy Duran and his co-leader from Lead in Lake Forest, who also presented to parents uh, this year to speak with the kids, and it was a really successful conversation that they had in health classes. The kids became really um, more interested in learning more about the topic and almost um, activists in a way, um, asking Ms. Peterman to dig a little bit more deeper and find out more information for them. Uh, it, it, after talking with Andy, um, some of the approach that they take is talking to the kids about how these big corporations are marketing um, these products towards teens, and it gets kids that are at seventh and eighth grade a little bit upset that people might be targeting them. So it's, it's a really effective approach in getting the kids really more aware and more educated and um, becoming more proactive in, in advising their friends that those are not good ideas either. Um, we've also sent home some resources for families, and in the school itself, we're monitoring trouble spots, and we are installing vaping detectors, um, just at a limited scale right now as we see how effective they are, but um, it's a, a vaping detector is a, a device that would go into a small enclosed place like a bathroom where um, you don't have personnel in there on a regular basis. Um, and basically, when it detects the vape or the, the, I guess, the vapor, um, sorry about my terminology, um, then it will send an alert to like the, the cell phones of the administrator, so then we can go and address the issue. So we'll see how that works, and um, if that helps the situation. Um, we have let families know that these are being installed, so hopefully they're having conversations with their kids as well. With staff, we have had staff meetings where we've talked about the issues, the rise in situations um, at the junior high, and most of this has been done specifically at the junior high. We've had some communication with High Crest staff, uh, but we've really only seen the incidents at the junior high. So we know education at the five-six level is important, um, and then leading up to what's going on at the junior high, um, has been more of the conversation with staff there. Uh, we've showed them a lot of the pictures of the paraphernalia, um, a lot more than what I showed you tonight, um, lots of what to look for, so if they're in the hallways, um, we know kids can, uh, the devices are small, so you can sneak them in and um, they're, they're like little USB um, things, so they, you, they can hide them in different places. And so sneaky behavior, they're monitoring some of that. Um, and then we've also talked to staff about if you see something, how do you report it? So you know, our staff is very conscious of this going on, and, and they're really um, working with administration to make sure that we are um, preventing it from going on at school. With parents, I mentioned, we had Andy Duran uh, come in from Lead. Uh, he did a presentation last spring, and then we did a repeat uh, this fall, the Up and Smoke presentation. We partnered with our PTO to bring him in. Um, and it was, it was just super well-received. He brings in the paraphernalia, passes it around, uh, the parents can actually see what it is. He has a lot of statistics, and also ways to talk to your kids about um, vaping and just general substance use. It's a great resource, and, and I've sent it out several times to parents in our community on the Lead website. There are videos, there's, Andy has a lot of his presentations up there, so um, if anybody's interested, um, I certainly can pass that on again. Um, we've had several parent communications throughout the year, including some research, again, the resources, and um, highlighting our board policy, just so people are informed. Um, so administrators have received about a dozen reports, like I said, this year of vaping activity on school grounds. And when we receive a, a report, we fully investigate it. So what we do is we talk to whoever gave us the report, we would talk to any other students or um, teachers that may have seen something, and if an incident is confirmed, then we act by applying the board policy. So it's seven dot one nine oh, and it states that a student is subject to disciplinary action for engaging in prohibited student conduct, which includes using, possessing, distributing, purchasing, or selling tobacco or nicotine materials, including without limitation, electronic cigarettes. And so our consequences uh, for possession of paraphernalia or for use of um, vape devices in school may include detentions, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions could also occur. Um, we would confiscate materials, um, and what we've also done is have a meeting with the administrator, uh, parents, and the school resource officer, including the student, in on that conversation. Um, and, and Officer Pavely has been really helpful to us in addressing these situations as they've arisen. While these consequences are often sufficient to help stop the behavior, we've also, we want to ensure that there's a follow-up plan and support for students that are engaging in some of this risky behavior. So um, we do regular check-ins um, with the administrators in the building, um, and we also offer resources to the, the families. Occasionally, we'll also have um, either our behavior management specialists or our um, social workers check in with the kids, just to make sure that there's not anything else going on that might lead them to engage in risky behaviors. So we've done a lot, but we also have some places to go. So uh, we, in moving forward, we, like I said, we want to look at how we're using these vape detectors and, and possibly expand upon them. Um, and so, you know, we've, I've worked with Tony Demonti on getting them, securing them for our building, and so we'll be looking at how they're, how effective they are, um, before investing more and expanding that. Um, we also want to look at the data about where incidents are occurring and when they're occurring. So um, as Katie showed you during the growth presentation, the EduClima dashboard, we do log any incidents in EduClima, so we can start to look at that data and see, you know, was it happening in, only in the bathrooms? Was it happening outside? Um, I can tell you right now, the three, uh, we've had locker room and bathroom situations this year. So um, we know it's places that are not as regularly monitored, so we can put in um, different interventions based on what the patterns of behavior are that we are seeing. And we also want to um, take a look at the curriculum adjustments, adjustments that we've made to enhance the health curriculum this year, um, and possibly include more in the coming years, um, and maybe there's other things that we can do through programming, events through the school year, homeroom lessons, that sort of thing. Um, all of these efforts will be wrapped into an ongoing programming that will educate students, address incidents, monitor student behaviors, and involve yearly communication um, and regular communication throughout the year with parents as well. So um, while we've had some pointed communications based on kind of a reaction to incidents, as we go into next year, we want to have a set plan for how we're going to communicate to parents and students alike, um, and do it more of an, in a proactive way. Thankfully, we have seen an initial reduction in our reports, so it kind of spiked, uh, I'd say November, December. Um, and as we've entered back into the school year, um, the new school year or the new year, um, it's, it, we have seen a reduction in that, so that's been positive, but we want to continue that trend, and hopefully, um, some of these measures will help with that. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Um, so it sounds like discipline is, um, if you're, if the case is confirmed, depends on a case-by-case basis? Is that right?
Yeah, we take, it's, it's the same with any disciplinary action that we have. Um, we really look at the situation, we look at what's involved, we have to look at who's involved in, in all of that stuff. So we take several things into account, yes.
Other questions? Frank?
Um, thank you for this. It's becoming or is a big issue, obviously, um, and I think one of the, the things that was very useful was the parent presentation. Um, and, and the reason is because I'm not sure many of the parents are educated enough. Um, and one of the problems is there's, there's kind of an understanding that if someone's smoking, that, that you'll find out. You know, the clothing will smell, you know, there'll be a little bit of, you know, the other indications that parents that are watching even a little bit will pick up on and that, that they've learned over decades, maybe even. This is almost totally different and relatively new, um, what the device looks like, the fact that there is no telltale smell, um, except maybe bubble gum in the air, but I'm not sure that would, would raise enough bells. So I think the parent education part is really important, because it's not just, are they getting caught doing it at school? And one of the concerns is that they're getting better at hiding it. You know, as they found out, when no one was looking, they were maybe a little bit more careless, and as they found out more people were watching, they, like you said, it's, it's relatively easy if you're trying to be clever to, to hide it. Um, but the parents making sure that they don't do it at home will, will, is an important part of this whole process. So that, I appreciated the presentation that was given, but I think even more parent outreach is, is important in this particular area.
I agree, and it truly is a partnership, and, and I think that, um, you know, I, I mentioned that we've gotten reports through our um, confidential reporting forum and other kids um, coming to the forefront, but we've also had several parents call and say, hey, my kid told me this, you know, this is going on, can you investigate it more? And, and I think as we continue to educate parents and do a better job of that, that will only help us come at it from both sides.
Go ahead, El.
Um, I was just going to ask, I know it's relatively new, all your efforts, but have there been any student reactions or parent reactions that you expect or didn't expect? Uh, positive that you can?
Yeah, I think overall, positive, um, from the parent side for sure. Um, a, a couple of people just questioning, um, you know, how are we going about telling kids that it's not, it is prohibited? that it's not, it is prohibited at school and making sure that we are being very clear with our messaging? And I think that's something that we can always do a better job at with our kids and really reinforcing it multiple times. You know, you have to tell them three times for it to stick. So that's good feedback for us. But I think really, I think parents want school to be safe and they want their kids to be safe outside of school and pick up good, healthy habits. And so really, it's been positive from that side. From the student's side, I think, you know, we have a lot of students that aren't engaging in this activity. And from when they hear about this, it's, and the measures that are being taken, they say thank you. So that's a really positive reaction for me, because they know that we're, again, looking out for them, maybe that'll contribute to their sense of belonging at school as well, if they can go in the bathrooms without fear of having it be an uncomfortable situation. So I think from both sides, it's been really positive. And like I said, Danielle was sharing with me from her health classes, the kids were really feeling strongly, they wanted her to secret shop some places around and really, you know, get more involved in that discussion. So I think that is a positive, too, that our kids are willing to engage with us if we open the door.
Good, thank you. And thank you for getting ahead of this. I mean, I know it feels like we're a little behind, but I think, given the number of incidences that we've had, it's, you're probably leading the charge here, so thank you.
Great. Other thoughts? Yeah, John? You're not on.
Thank you. Have we considered doing a survey on what the parents think of our reaction to the vaping issue is?
That's something we can consider moving forward. We haven't done that yet, but that's something definitely we can, we can.
Yeah, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, further promoting what we've done, you know, and getting more input and raising awareness.
Definitely, asking them what more do they need and do they feel educated?
Right.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I have to share an anecdote. So I was on a flight that was really short, but it was really long, because I had some kids behind me who were vaping, and it was horrendous. I mean, you could tell when they were doing it, and I looked back there and I, eventually I said something and they denied it, but it's unbelievably disgusting. So I feel for anybody who's around somebody vaping. I mean, it's, I, there's definitely telltales. Anyway, yeah, it's, I can't be trusted, my reaction, it's horrifying, you know, what these kids are doing and what this stuff does.
All right, thanks, Lisa.
So some of the buzz in the parent community is that the district treats kids differently for the same kind of vaping violation. And Nutri has a hard and fast rule, if you're caught vaping, here are the consequences. Kind of what were your thoughts when you decided to look at kind of vaping as a, on a case-by-case basis?
It's how we approach all discipline. We're actually, that's a requirement, is to look at each individual disciplinary situation on a case-by-case basis. So there's no hard and fast rule, if you're vaping, then you're suspended out of school for a certain amount of days. We really have to investigate it and look at each situation on an individual basis. And that's the same for bullying, for physical aggression, for verbal aggression, any of those situations, we'd all look at it on an individual basis. But we do have options, so it could be a detention, or it could be an out-of-school suspension. So we do have kind of a range of different things. I think when it comes to discipline, the most important part that we often forget when we talk about discipline is having that follow-up support. And that's something we're working really hard to do for kids, no matter what the circumstances, and building in opportunities for them to talk with adults, to really dig in a little bit more deeply as to why they're doing this and hopefully put some plans in place to support them going forward. So it's not just punitive, but it's also hopefully changing behavior moving forward.
Have any of your reports been during recess, or is it because it's monitored during recess? I'm just wondering, because I know for a fact, when my kids were in seventh and eighth grade, that it was happening outside and not always during school hours, so I'm not saying, but there were kids that were doing it on school property, playgrounds. I'm just wondering if you've received reports of that and how we monitor, or if we monitor outside the schools, how does that work?
Yeah, again, that comes to the look for's, if there's, I mean, we've talked with all of our recess supervisors about looking for that. Certainly, we get reports of negative behavior at recess pretty frequently, depending on what the behavior is. And there have been some reports that have been investigated and unfounded. And then, like I said, the reports that we've had confirmed have been inside of the school. But certainly, we're always looking to see if there's shady behavior going on at recess, too.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Great. Well, thank you once again for getting to, I have a feeling we'll be talking about this some more, unfortunately, but thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, next up, dental plan.
Yes, and Lisa Paves did a very nice board summary of this evening. And the administration researched the question, got the data, and we're going to recommending, be recommending a move to change to the cooperative, the Cooperative Nineties Dental Provider. And Dr. Glawacki has this report.
So a lot has already been said, and I won't repeat it. I just wanted to highlight some of the advantages to moving over to the dental plan for Cooperative Nineties. The premiums are cheaper, and there are some plan improvements, such as no deductible for PPO network dentists, an increase from $1,000 to $2,000 in annual benefit maximums, and an increase from $1,000 to $2,000 in lifetime orthodontic benefits. Similar to when the district entered Co-op Nineties Health Plan, there is a minimum three-year initial membership. During these first three years, it is possible for the district to incur additional claim costs. Finally, the district will have to pay its proportionate share of the reserves. The board will realize the savings on the dental insurance premiums for administrators, and the savings will offset the reserves, the reserve money paid to the co-op within approximately six years. The reserve savings, should the district ever leave the cooperative, would be returned to the district. It's recommended that the board approve the Cooperative Nineties Dental Plan Agreement.
Okay, any questions? Okay, let's move on.
Yes, and this is about a shared services agreement that we also heard about this evening. Regina approached District 39 requesting use of a softball diamond just east of Ramona School for their playground. Regina would like to use the diamond after school, and this would just be during their spring softball season. The season begins in early spring and is over with by the end of our school year. In exchange for using the field, Regina will make improvements to the diamond and the surrounding land, as well as provide field maintenance during the season. Additionally, District 39 will get to use Regina's auditorium at the high school and their theater spaces and their adjacent spaces to the auditorium for 16 hours during the school year. This saves us $6,000 a year in rental fees for theater usage. So the four-year shared services agreement has been reviewed by attorneys and is ready for your approval.
Any questions? Okay, and we've gone over this in committee quite a bit, so thank you very much for that. Board policy review.
Yes, and we're up for a second and final read. Dr. Glawacki has this one.
So some minor typos were corrected from the last read, and there was a slight revision to Policy 2:80. Other than that, they're the same as first read.
Okay. Any questions on the second read? Hopefully, final read of these. Terrific. Okay, moving on then, that takes us to our second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Remember to state your name and you have, and your community of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Erin Stone, and I live in Willmet. And Mr. Penzica had mentioned the foundation, the Education Foundation's Open House for the Science Olympiad on Saturday. And I had the pleasure of going and just wanted to thank all of the people who make that happen. I spent a significant amount of time talking to a delightful sixth grader who was in the gliders class, and he knew more about aeronautical history, airplanes, pilots, and military battles involving airplanes than I thought humanly possible. And I just think it's fascinating that someone has, or that it's such a great opportunity for people who have this kind of passion to be able to do that and build community with other people who have the same passion, and that hopefully that's helping people feel more included during a vulnerable period of time in school. And so thank you to everyone involved in that. And that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments at this time? Okay, then that brings us to action items in our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Penzica, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the personnel report dated February 25, 2019. I move to approve the summer 2019 High Crest Phase II construction project bids. I move to approve the execution of the Cooperative Nineties Dental Plan Agreement. I move to approve the shared services agreement with Regina Dominican High School as presented in the report. I move to approve a second and final reading of the Board of Education Policies 2:80, Member of the Board of Education, Oath and Conduct, 4:30, Revenue and Investments, 4: 40, Budget as Spending Plan, 4:40, again, is that a typo? Okay, all right, good. 4:40, Incurring Debt, 4:45, Insufficient Fund Checks, 4:46, State and Federal Funds, 4:50, Paying for Goods and Services, 4:51, Tuition Fees, 4:60, Purchases, 4:61, Local Purchasing, and 4:62, Requesting Goods and Services. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between January 29, 2019 and February 25, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $390,495.68. O&amp;M Fund, $333,956.98. Depth Service, $1,500. Transportation Fund, $148,253.53. Capital Projects, $269,010. Tort Fund, $18,445.50. For a total all funds of $1,161,661.69. I move to approve the manual checks issued between January 29, 2019 and February 25, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $558,953.89. O&amp;M Fund, $3,413.79. Transportation Fund, $708.98. For a total all funds of $563,076.66.
Thank you very much. The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Sessrady?
Yes.
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 Yes, the yeses have it and the motion is carried. Thank you very much. It takes us to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? We have any good in welfare?
I have new business.
Oh, new business.
I think it's new business. It's kind of old business and new business. So as most of us are probably aware, the, there was a, there's an article in the Tribune about the ABOKA boundary, and it got me thinking.
Old business.
The old business. Does, you know, do the district boundaries make a lot of sense? And curious of the board's sense on how one would even approach a dialogue, assuming there'd be a dialogue, one would think there would be, about how to rationalize the borders of the districts within the township from a board level. I want to throw that out there.
I have no answer to your question, Lynn, whether they're, but as a board, from a board level, I'd be more interested in starting dialogues with surrounding districts about consolidating resources before I would about haggling over boundaries.
Yeah, I was being nice. I was talking about consolidation. Yeah, no, it was a good one.
You were, okay.
I was.
Great.
I appreciate your more direct approach.
On the same page.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other thoughts or comments? I mean, I will say that this is a topic that comes up periodically. I'm happy to give you a little bit more history of it. We can continue to talk about it. I think that generally, I would say, it's never been District 39 who has felt that, you know, who had any hesitancy to proceed on these sorts of things. But frequently, other districts are not as interested, for whatever reason. Yeah.
One more comment on that, though. It might be a unique opportunity, although I know it's a huge challenge, this conversation, but with the recent move by Carson's, et cetera.
Yep, yep.
Significantly impacts of other districts' funding.
So maybe the right thing to do is to be clear to the audience on TV that if there are other districts who are interested in pursuing this conversation with us, we are open. Our phone number is published, and give us a call. Because I think, I, I think many of us agree that there could be improved efficiencies and improvements for the taxpayers in several different districts if we were to do this, but we'll see. Any other old slash new slash good in welfare business? Okay, great. Seeing none, may seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss school safety and collective bargaining.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss school safety and collective bargaining.
May I have a second?
A second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Sessrady?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. The motion carries, and we are now adjourned to executive session. Time is 9:17. No, it's not. It's 9:08.